Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Koch, Chair of the Zoning Board. Today is Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. Welcome, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. If we start with a pledge of allegiance, would everyone please rise?
And pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to be handing over the gavel to Ron Fagan. He is going to chair tonight in an effort to kind of streamline things when things change in the, in the spring. So I'll hand that over. Actually, why don't we switch seats? So they can have the camera. And Ron is just going to take over from here. He'll start by reading the-
Need to switch the nameplates, too.
Thank you. I don't want anybody to confuse me with you.
Maybe it's the other way around.
I'm going to be a little more clear.
Depends on your perspective. Ron is just going to read the order of the governor that we've been reading for the past year and a half. We are now in kind of a hybrid environment because we do have a member who is doing this remotely. We are not going to be taking comments from the public remotely because everybody is here. We don't have that faculty, but we're still going to read it just in case because, because who knows how things are happening. So Ron, take it away.
All right. So this does go on for a while, so be patient. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's July 2nd, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of North Andover website, www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting only, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to North Andover GovCam Comcast Channel 8, or Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive records of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings, please email your questions, comment prior to or during the meeting to jbattersby, that's J-B-A-T-T-E-R-S-B-Y, at northandoverma.gov. The question comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. A copy of the application and supporting documents are on file in the Zoning Board of Appeals, 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass., and may be viewed on the Town of North Andover website at www.northandoverma.gov. There you have it.
Thank you, Ron. You have done a justice and, just again, to repeat, in order to bracket the announcement is not all of that applies, just procedurally you want to read the entirety of it. We are going to have public comment here in person. We do, however, have one member who is, one member of the board who is attending remotely. So with that, again, take it away, Ron.
All right. So first item on the agenda would be the acceptance of the minutes from the meeting in June. I hope everybody has had a chance to peruse them. Any comments, suggestions, edits on the minutes? None? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
All right.
I like voice votes.
Yeah, voice votes are great. It's nice to get back to them. Okay, so first item of business, new public hearing on 217 Gray Street. And we started off with Alan reading the ad.
It'd be my pleasure.
Thank you.
Before I read the public notice, I'd like to say hello to all of the members here. It's nice to see us all live instead of looking through TV. And to the people over the audience, it must be nice to be here in person where you can express your whatevers to somebody in person instead of saying it over TV. That it's nice to be progressing, per se. After I said that, let me get going.
It wasn't a motion, but I'll second it anyway.
Thank you. Do I hear you? Let me vote on that.
All unanimous.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Allison Spocks and Kevin Spocks for prop- oh, I'm doing the wrong one here. Oh, sorry about that. Instant replay coming here. Okay? Notice is hereby given that the Town of North Andover Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested. It is the same date, by the way. Okay? In the petition of Paul Miller and Lillian Miller for property at 217 Gray Street, MAP 107D, parcel 0112, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R2 zoning district. The applicants are requesting a variance pursuant to the Town and North Andover zoning bylaws, Section 195-7.3B, Table 2, summary of dimensional requirements for one side setback in the R2 zoning district for the purpose of constructing a one-and-a-half-foot detached garage on the property. Specifically, applicants have requested a side setback needing a relief variance of 18 feet 8 inches. The side setback proposed is 11 feet 4 inches. The side setback required by Table 2 is 30 feet. Application and supporting material are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday in the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Koch Jr., Esquire, Chairman.
Gives me chills every time.
Very good. And you are representing the Millers.
Yes, Attorney Brian Vaughn from Smolak &amp; Vaughn here on behalf of Paul and Lillian Miller.
Okay.
And with me tonight is, actually, Mr. Miller is here, as well as his builder, Matt Murphy. And I guess I just, as an initial matter, I did want to apologize for the late submission that I just made the other, the other day. I know that this board doesn't take kindly sometimes to late submissions. I got involved in this matter late the submission was made before I was retained. Just in the course of myself preparing myself for this process, I, it was a good exercise for me to generally outline my thoughts and the, the arguments for my oral presentation. And so in doing that, I prepared a memo in support, and I figured I would submit it to the extent you wanted to enter it into the record and entertain it. Great, albeit late if there is a problem with, with that, we can proceed tonight without it formally entered into the record, but I did want to-
Mr. Vaughn, can I make a motion to allow you to speak tonight? To make it totally official? Would you have a problem?
No problem.
I make a motion to let Mr. Vaughn represent the Millers.
Yep.
Okay, and the matter before us tonight?
Is that all, is that all your memo is?
No, 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 no. So there were, there were two things. One was the, was my, my letter of authorization. The second one was a memorandum that was actually a written memo just in support of, of the petition, so.
Actually, no reason why we have to punish the Millers for paying Mr. Vaughn to come here twice. He's here, nothing's going to change. Let's do it. I'll make a motion.
I don't have, I don't have it in front of me.
Right.
So there's a, I don't know what you're voting on, so.
Oh, I thought you got the memo from the email.
I did not print it.
I do have copies I can submit.
I didn't know it was something separate.
Yeah, Mr. Vaughn, you're on the floor.
Yeah, I don't think it's a vote that has to be taken. I guess the question I would ask is, given that it was a late submission and you were late on it, are you up to speed and-
I'm fully up to speed.
Ready to go.
And, and again, I, you know, substantively, the memo just outlines the oral presentation that I intend to make tonight. I submitted it at, at the risk potentially of backlash because I do know, and it's understandable. Like people, you guys are, you know, volunteers and, you know, we don't want to be like dropping something on you last minute. So I, again, just, it was something that, that I found helpful. I figured I would, I would email it to the board to the extent there's any board members that haven't seen it with like a paper copy. I do have paper copies with me.
I don't think anyone else, am I the only one who didn't see it or, I mean, I just saw this. I didn't see the second portion. Forgive me. I have an old iPhone 6 that doesn't, doesn't-
And I admittedly, just to speak, I did not read the memo. I know what the memo is and I know what's in there, and if you're going to be here tonight, then I didn't, I didn't bother, you know, in the last 24 hours to read the memo. So it really doesn't impact me in any way. So it's, it's fine with me.
I went with it. I mean, I went through it. But to me, I'm going to say I, it seemed kind of redundant to the, to the initial application. So I found my, okay, so I got, bottom line is, I didn't pick up. I think, please be clear with the points that you made that were not in the material that we reviewed because they looked similar to me as I reviewed them.
Yes, and I don't, I think the, I think that it probably is somewhat redundant, but I don't think that, that the, you know, one of the things that was included was kind of a, just a highlighted colored picture. And I don't know if your, your image came through with, with coloring, but for, for, I guess, my purposes, I refer to this, this sheet. And to me, the one thing in here that really helps highlight this is showing in this color the constraints on, on the lot. And then, secondly, I think just it, it, it was a, just a narrative which outlines the, the arguments for, for the variance, which-
With, with the understanding that it would have been better if it had been done earlier.
Right.
All right. If you say you're going to present the, the narrative as you sent it email, let's start from ground zero. Let's go through the narrative and-
Okay, so.
So just let me just clarify, because it's usually me who has the issue with it. I will just call, you know, identify the, you know, the white elephant in the room. So it's me. So what your, this is for me is something that you would present on a board anyways. And so what you're presenting to me is what I already have. You just put pretty colors on it.
Exactly.
Yeah, there's also one other map that has a little bit better outline of the plots than what's on that map there.
So I won't look at that.
So in any event, I'm sorry for sidetracking us so early. I know it's generally a long night for you guys, so. The, the property it issued here was purchased by the Millers in, in May of 2000. They've owned and resided at the property for 21 years, longtime residents. It's in the R2 zone. It's improved by an existing single-family home that was built in approximately 1985, prior to their acquisition of the property. They're seeking to add a two-car detached garage, which I think is going to be a common theme for you guys tonight. The, the plan that was submitted shows the proposed location to the left side of the home, and the variance relief that's being sought is for a left side yard setback. There, there's a 30-foot setback requirement in the R2 zone, and the applicants are seeking relief of approximately 18.8 feet, as is outlined in the application. So the lot itself is rather regularly shaped. It's, it's, it's from the, looking at it from the street, the property lines are, are both on a parallel angled substantially to the right. When you hit about the midpoint of the lot, they then cut back and angle substantially to the left, so there's sort of a jog in the, the lot, making it a very unusually shaped lot, I would say. And in addition to that, there's substantial wetlands located to the, the rear of this With respect to the wetlands, it should be, it should be noted that the variance, if it is granted tonight by the ZVA, the property is still within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. It will require a notice of intent and relief to be granted by the North Andover Conservation Commission. The proposed garage is, is located within the 100-foot wetland buffer to the rear, and it's approximately 75 feet from the wetland, so it will require further, further relief from the, the Conservation Commission. Something that is, is not before you tonight, but just so that you're, you're aware, there are some, some other improvements in the back of the home which don't require zoning relief. They're taking down an existing deck, they're, they're enclosing a sunroom, and they're putting a patio in. Those are shown on the plan that was submitted. Those have already been approved by the Conservation Commission. The actual garage structure, however, the Conservation Commission, as is their course of conduct, prefers that all of the other relief has been, been granted from other boards before they will consider it. So whether they go back and they amend that initial filing or have to file anew, they will need to go to the Conservation Commission. So with respect to where a garage could possibly be situated on this lot, this is, this is kind of the only place where, where it could be located. There's no other real feasible location, and it's due to the location of the existing house, the driveway, and the wetlands to the, the rear, which creates significant constraints. On this colored, highlighted plan that I, I had submitted, I think it really outlines this yellow structure here being the proposed garage. Because we've got to stay a distance from this wetland line, it really can't slide back any further. We have existing two-car undergarage and an existing driveway, so it really can't go any closer to the street. And then because of this really odd lot line here, to the extent we were to even try to creep it forward would actually be creating a, a greater need for variance, we'll be coming even in closer to the lot line. So they've, the applicant submitted architectural plans with the, with their filing. We believe them to be aesthetically pleasing. They're of colonial design, which is consistent with what's the existing home on the lot, as well as with the neighborhood in general. The, I guess one other thing that should be noted is that the applicants have reviewed the, the plans and discussed their filing with their direct abutters to their left, which is the, the lot which would be most impacted by this variance. Those abutters have, 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 you know, essentially approved the project to the extent that they can approve. They, they provided an email, which was included in the filing, evidencing their support for the project. I guess, you know, that's kind of the bird's eye overview. I think it's a really strong case for a variance having both in a regular lot as well as some soil issues. Happy to respond to any questions or expound further on, on any elements of the project that you may have questions about.
Okay. Thank you. Should we open up for questions from the board?
Oh, hell.
So when did the conservation approve the deck?
The order of conditions expired on, the appeal period expired on July 3rd.
So you already started?
Yep.
And just to point out that this garage, you already have two garage under, two under? So this is going to be four spots at 1,080 square feet, and your home is 2,700 square feet. So this is huge. So can you tell me why it needs to be so big?
So they, the, you know, I guess-
So the reason why I'm asking, the purpose of it, is you already have two under, and I get it, people have more than two cars. A lot of families have, I mean, I have three kids. We've had multiple cars. I've, what it is, but I'm just concerned that this is going to be an apartment.
Yes, and I, I guess I would, I understand potentially that concern. What, what I would say is the need is having currently five adult drivers and six vehicles in the family. The, in addition to the, the project which is being proposed with the Conservation Commission, you can see there's, there's two relatively large sheds on, on the property which are identified, I believe they were identified to be removed, but whether or not they were identified to be removed, they, they are being removed, and they're going to be using the rear portion of this for, to replace the storage currently in the shed. And the, you know, attic space is specifically just, just for storage.
Are the sheds being removed because they're too close to the wetland?
No, they're somewhat dilapidated, and so I can put new ones for the, and that's what my plan was to do.
And am I correct in guessing that there is no heat, septic?
There's definitely no plumbing, no septic, no heat. Okay. There's no heat. And, you know, this is an issue that, actually, Matt, the builder, could, could speak to better, or perhaps even Paul, but my understanding is that the design of it is not with adequate egress to be habitable space?
The windows are small enough where they're not going to meet the cofferal bit. There are any other supportive windows, not taking out the required.
So the other question I had is, why would you not bring it closer to the house and have it as an addition onto your house and have the garage, and make that under, and have a garage onto your house where you would have a less of a, a variance requirement?
If you bring it forward.
Attached to the house, not detached.
Yeah, so it's architecture would be hard to make it look personally aesthetic pleasing.
Yeah, I think-
It would be hard to do.
That'd be avoiding my family room, fireplace, and everything else for that edge of the garage.
I just, I just find it very large compared to the size of the house. I mean, it's almost, it's, it's, for me, it's going to stand out as your garage, so for me, it's just a little too big.
Well, if you put it next to the house, you lose the two spaces.
That are under already, so you, they wouldn't be picking up any garage space.
Yeah, if it were, if it were directly against it, you would lose those spaces. And even, you know, depending on where you move it, you still need to have a turning radius when you're backing out of the stall to spin your car back around to, to get back out.
It doesn't look like the driveway connects to the garage.
I believe that's existing, which is-
Okay, so they just ensure the proposed driveway. All right.
Mr. Vaughn, my question is this. Well, I, you people submitted a plot plan over here, and the left-hand line is straight.
That is the, I believe that's the assessor map, that one, and I believe it's incorrect on the, on the assessor map. This is the actual delineation of the lot.
So this is the assessors map?
Correct.
And that's incorrect?
Correct.
This is the actual plot plan by Meramec Engineering?
This is the actual-
That shows the true-
The true shape of the lot, yes.
But at some point, it must have been changed, with a lot line have it changed?
No, and, and-
Because this was, this is registered.
The, the, this plan, which I, one of the board members had referred to, which you haven't seen, which I also included, is the original subdivision plan, which does in fact show that delineation of the lot.
So which one are you talking about, Alan? Oh, oh, okay.
It's actually not very uncommon for the, the assessor map to be, have small, small incorrect delineations.
So I would share Ellen's observation that it certainly does appear to be, you know, large, particularly in comparison to the main structure. I don't share the concern that it would be an apartment. It just doesn't look like that upper level could, could fit more than, I don't know, Tyrion Lannister for crying out loud. But at 30 by 24, you know, I guess what is, what is the plan? Are we going to be putting boats in there? Because 30 feet deep is, that, that's like three small cars.
I have a Suburban, but it's a new one, so it, it needs that space. In the sheds are several items that can go on the second floor as storage, but then you have, you have your snow blowers, and I have a portable generator and things like that that would need to go in there without being so tight to the cars, which is why we made that dimension. And in addition, you know, I may have some, if, if we want to get all the cars off the street when everyone's home and so forth, then we can utilize that space as much as we can.
You don't park them in the driveway? You park on the street?
No, 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 we don't park on the street, but the driveway gets full pretty quick, both sides, if you want some egress. And if, to the extent that we don't park in the street, but there is any park in the street, it's, it's a, it's a tough corner, by the way. So we want to keep everything from the safety issue, obviously, as much as we can.
So thank, thank you for the details. My next question is, I don't know that I heard you hit it head-on or anticipated head-on, but it may have been in the presentation or the discussion of the sighting of this particular footprint. But as a board, we generally like to give as little relief as possible, and we're awfully close, we're not at single digits. Single digits are not quite a non-starter for me, but, but close. You know, an 11-foot setback, even, even for an awkwardly shaped lot, conceded, absolutely conceded on, on the shape here. But can this be moved? Can, can the footprint be moved for, again, I'm not going to use exact terms here. I'm not going to use north, south, east, or west. I'm going to say to the right, you know, some, some feet to the right in order to limit the setback.
I think the, the issue that they were running into was with, with conservation, and it seems maybe, maybe somewhat arbitrary, but like there's like a, kind of an unwritten 75 feet that they were trying to, to stick to, and because the way the, what the, that wetland comes forward to the rear, any further they're going to, to the right with it, they're potentially pushing against that. Now, you know, to be, you know, honest, like, you know, if we're talking, you know, there may be a, a way you can pick up a few inches or-
You have to go back towards the house to get it?
To-
And it's just closer, fire separation?
Yeah, it's, it's really the, the, as you're pulling it, it forward, you're, you're inevitably becoming a little bit closer there.
So not to confuse things, but I wasn't asking about pulling it forward. I was just take the box and move it five feet to the right, you know, just to be crass. I don't know what the right number is because I can't really tell how much room there is between that, you know, that right side wall and the, and the house. I know you don't want to, I don't, I know you don't want it to overlap in any way. I totally get that. But I'm just looking at numbers here, and 11.4 feet from the, or 11.33 feet, or, you know, whatever the right number is, from the abutter who has approved. And by the way, I appreciate that you've reached out to the, to the abutter, and I appreciate that you've gotten positive, positive feedback from the abutter, so thank you for taking that step. So I'm still, just as a board member, looking at the numbers, and the number is 11.33 feet from the, from the lot line, and that's, that's a number that just makes me anxious, for lack of a better word.
Whether it be helpful or not, but at least for your knowledge, that, that lot line is, is a tree-lined lot line, okay? Which if there's any disturbance in the trees, once this, if this was built, we would certainly replace that privacy barrier on behalf of us and the abutter. And then the abutter's house, the actual house, house is probably seventy-five to a hundred feet away from there. They're on the left one, huh?
Scale it to about one-twenty. It's not shot as built or anything, but it's about a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and eighteen.
It's on, they're on the left side of their lot.
Sure, understood. And I wasn't, I wasn't referring to any, any lines to, you know, structures on the abutting land. I'm just looking at the lot line, just looking at numbers here. I get that there are trees. I certainly looked at, looked at the neighborhood and looked at the Google view and all that kind of good stuff. So I see that there is, there appears to be privacy screening. You know, whether that's a four, four-season screening, I don't know. But that's not necessarily what I'm exploring. I'm just exploring eleven point three-three feet gives me hives.
When we did, I'll let you talk, but when we did put this, we actually tried different locations and the access to the back of the house gets pretty narrow if we move that to the right, where I would have a walkway to the decks and to a patio. It gets pretty tight there.
So in, in the existing drawing, it looks like there's thirteen point five-two feet, you know, in, in distance. It's not, it's not clear how, how, you know, if, if, if the box, if the footprint of the garage were moved four feet to the right, I'm, I'm having trouble conceptualizing how that limits, you know, your, your walkway from the driveway to the backyard.
Yeah, it's, it's, I understand the, the walkability and access area, but my concern would be moving it closer to conservation. They put eyes on it. If you go to the right, you're getting close to the wetlands. I know it's like seventy-five feet away, but if we move it one or two feet to, to get, say we get eleven to thirteen, I think we'll hear from conservation saying you've created a worse condition than what we.
Walk me through what that line is. I'm having trouble finding and, and tell me what the informal seventy-five feet is.
Okay, so if you go right back to the triangles represent the wetlands? So that comes, it, it's parallel with the lot line from the stone wall and then it takes like a ninety-degree turn towards the front of the house?
I, I'm not, look, I'm a buffoon most nights.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, I found it. It's way in the back.
It's the back right corner of the lot.
That's not where I was looking. I found it.
You're correct, it's super far away, but their concern was, well, pushing it to the right, one or two feet to get from eleven to thirteen is still closer to the wetlands. That's why it's.
I see, you're managing the back right corner and trying to meet whatever this.
Exactly.
This informal standard that CONCOM is putting on us.
Exactly right.
When they start to get hives, if you will, I guess.
I, I totally get it. And, and they appear to always be driving the bus because they insist that we make a determination before that they do. So for some reason, they don't want to make any determinations. They just want to tell you what to do, which really goes up me the wrong way, as you can imagine. That being, that being said, look, can you, you know, lie to me and tell me that you can move, move this box a little bit to the right and still get to seventy-five feet? And still beat their seventy-five feet?
The answer is yes, we can, we can probably pinpoint exactly where that has to be. It's probably a couple of feet, it's not a ton. We'll have to have the engineer scale it to give you an exact dimension where it is. But yes, we can get seventy-five feet.
Let me ask it, let me ask it another way. Thirty feet is a large depth even for a suburban. I know snow blowers and all that other stuff. Every time I open my car door, I hit something in my garage. But what if you made it twenty-six feet, all right? And just move that back and now you increase the amount of space between the lot line. So let's say it was twenty-four by twenty-six, twenty-four by twenty-four. That would increase your distance.
Less depth is what?
Less depth, yeah.
I think that owner would actually prefer to make it less deep as opposed to moving it closer to the house and dealing with what repercussions we'd have from conservation.
But if that doesn't solve the setback?
No, it doesn't make the setback more.
No, it's just the setback, that's bad.
Yeah, it does. Because if you, if you move, if you move it back, you're a greater distance.
If you hold the back line, make it twenty-four.
He's still not going to move it because he's going to keep it at twenty-four and.
Right, but, but you, you push it back, but now you still have a greater distance.
It widens the setback just a little bit.
Yeah.
It adds probably about two, two and a half feet.
Do you have a walk upstairs to the storage?
Ten feet, you add about five feet.
So that would.
That's why it's thirty. It's, it's twenty-four looking at it, thirty feet, I'm with you, it, it's deep. We have a three-foot wide coed minimum staircase and we're still hoping to get a couple of snow blow, snow more storage type setback.
Can I say something? I personally have no problem with this, but in order to placate the board, could you shrink the garage by a foot and a half?
Halfwise?
Woodwise, yeah.
Width?
Instead of twenty-four feet, make it twenty-two and a half. Let me ask it.
Yeah, logistically, it, it would be kind of in the same width of the existing. You're getting to the tight, open your door, hit the snow blower type thing?
Or hit the wall.
Hit.
I think my existing under is just twenty.
I mean, I have no problem with what you're proposing, but to make everybody happy, I mean, you shrink the building a little bit and you make everybody happy and we go, all go home and win it. I mean, that's the way I see it.
Is it a matter of the board if we shrink a foot and move a foot?
No, I'd, I'd be indifferent as to the method, as, as long as the end result were increasing the left side setback.
Paul, Paul, is there a, and I know it's not your, your job. You want us to do the best we, we can do. Is there a particular threshold, having looked at this plan, at which you feel like you would, feel a little bit more comfortable?
Like, look, Brian, I would love to see twenty feet. I mean, but that, that's clearly not something that can happen, you know, on, under this application, which I totally get, which is why we're all kind of working together to try to do better than eleven and not as, not as well as twenty.
Paul, Paul, can I say something?
I hope you do.
Let's use the number ten feet because you seem to have a hangup with, under whatever the arithmetic is. Between eleven feet and ten feet, we're talking less than the newspaper here.
Indeed.
Okay, okay, when you're on, what's that, a two-acre lot or a good, a good acre lot?
One acre.
A one acre lot. I mean, what's a four and a half over here? The way the driveway is, I was parked across the street and you look at the hot top. What he's proposing goes right into the driveway. It, it's a straight shot. Okay, so why would you want to move it to the right where you make everything out of, out of norm? Let him sink it a little bit, but he wants to, the way the driveway is, you guys straight down and the garage is there. What's eleven feet or ten feet? What the hell's the big difference of a foot?
Because it's, it's the same straight shot. If you move it to the, if you move it to the right four feet, it's still the same straight shot.
Could I exercise my prerogative as champ?
It's the same straight shot whether you move it over this far.
Paul, Alan, exercise my prerogative as champ?
This, this part of the meeting is to get information from the people who are asking for it and then we'll have the internal discussion afterwards. Would that work?
Sounds like a plan.
The trouble with that is that we, we close kind of the public comment thing and then the board deliberates and then it's, it's much harder to get back to the applicant. So, so to have this, this exchange with the applicant engaged and available for conversation is, is a useful exercise, I think.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, for me, when I was there, the guy to the, the lot to the left, that house is what, a hundred and fifty feet away?
One-twenty.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever the number is, it's way away. He's hugging the other side. It's nothing but open land. Okay, what's a four and a half?
Well, the.
What's a four and a half?
On the other side. If you look at it that way.
We all have our, please, I like Nestle, you like Hershey, is that?
I mean, to, to Mr. Kuscha's point, I, I don't feel like this particular plan impacts many other people other than the neighbor. And the neighbor is both far away and has assented, which I think is actually, that, to me, is the most important piece of this whole thing. Is, is that, that the, the neighbor who's highly impacted by this is like, yeah, that's fine. And I don't think any other neighbors are remotely affected in any way by it.
As, as a principle, I don't stand in disagreement with that. What, where the nuance that I put into it is that the, the neighbor might not be ready to say no. The neighbor doesn't want to live there for the next twenty-five years, having said no to the guy next door.
Sure.
So that, that's kind of where I'm, I'm coming in a little bit.
Yeah.
So we're being too much of a grand estate there?
What?
Okay, we're being too much of a grand estate? Being imposing all of these ridiculous hardships on this man?
I didn't.
What about a simple garage?
I, I didn't write the code, Alan. The code preexisted me and it preexisted you, so. So thirty, thirty feet is the standard.
No, I understand, but you seem to make a big deal out of eleven point three. You want to get it down to a single digit.
If, if I, if I might, Paul, one of the things that could potentially, in, you know, as we know, every case is, is different, right? You know, every lot's different. This particular case and this particular lot, one of the things that stuck out to me in looking at it is even though it is a large variance, you know, as you said, it's, it's close to single digits, because of the shape of the lot, it, it really, you know, from, from this point, I mean, you, you don't see too many lots that are, that are shaped that way. And where this driveway is, it's, 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 it's truly the absolute apex and it's only at this point. And for the most part, although it's, you know, eighteen feet of variance at this point, the variance itself isn't, it's not like it's a full parallel shot of something that's really ten feet from, from the neighbor's property. I mean, it's, it's just that, that one little point. I think that is a little bit of a distinguishing factor that you, you could potentially consider in, in hoping to.
Yeah, I get it. I mean, just looking at, looking at the plan, by the, once you get to the rear of the garage, it's twenty-four feet. So I mean, even, even the rear of the garage, you know, all of the things ignored, the rear of the garage still needs a variance. And if we're at twenty-four feet, Brian, I, I don't really have a comment. I say approved. We're not at twenty-four feet, though. On, on this plan, we're showing eleven point three-three feet from the abutter's lot line. And that's, that's thin. And I get, I get that there's, there's, you know, the neighbor is a hundred and twenty feet away. I get that the neighbor has said okay. And the neighbor might want to be doing something with their lot too. And then all of a sudden, you've got two garages that are twenty feet apart. And I wouldn't be, that, that's not something that would excite me. We're not headed down that path today. That is not what is before the board. Nonetheless, in the, in the, in the planning and the land use elements of the job, I would suggest that eleven point three-three feet is, it's, it's, eleven point three-three feet is not likely to get an approval from me. I'm only, I'm only one vote.
Right.
Obviously.
I'm another vote.
We understand this, Ellen.
So, so my issue is the size, the whole size compared to the size of the house. It's a really big structure for a garage, a detached garage. So for me, I'm having issue with the whole one thousand eighty square feet of a structure next to a twenty-seven hundred square foot home. So for me, that's not, I mean, that's, the size of, the height of the home is thirty-five feet. The height of the garage is twenty? Was it, are twenty, correct me if I'm.
It's one and a half stories.
Which is, I think twenty, is it twenty?
No.
That's, I thought I, maybe I'll need to put these on just to see properly.
It says height above grade is twenty feet.
So I did see twenty, okay. So I'm having issue with visually size and visually, I mean, the lot line, you can't see the lot line. But for me, that's just a little, that's actually a lot too big.
Visually, other than myself driving down the driveway, there's really no one impacted by that.
My name goes on this.
I'm talking, I'm talking, you should mention visually. I thought you meant if you look at it, it looks like a.
So visually, if I drive by and I see something that I permitted that I went, oh my God, that, that, for me.
Can I just add one thing? The total of the lot, this thing sits down off the street.
It's still a structure. That's a hundred and eighty square feet.
So a twenty-four foot wide two-car garage is pretty standard?
Nope.
No?
Nope. I know you're a builder, but I just, Google told me something different. Google told me that that's not a standard garage.
That's what I built.
It's not an average, this is, it's an oversi, it's an oversized garage.
I think the.
A garage is usually one story.
I'm with you on depth, a hundred percent.
The height is to replace the storage sheds and that was the only.
That dilapidated that you use or that?
They're full.
So because you have stuff, you know, it's just, it's.
Should we put a flat roof on it? I mean, I don't think anybody wants to see a flat roof on a garage.
You don't put flat roofs in New England, but, I mean, I'm just telling you my concern and my issue is that I think it's big. I think it's too big and I think it's too close to the lot line.
Give me a second, if I can just have a minute.
You can show me anything. How Brian's talking? How do, how do we know if Alexandria has something to say? Does she just yell? Or do we have to ask her, hey Alexandria, do you want to say anything?
Yes, but they usually.
You know me, I just yell.
I guess she just yells.
Thank you, Jen. Thanks, guys. Hi Alexandria. That was weird.
Hi. Why, do I sound like God?
Well, you've got this little phone symbol that shows up on the big screen in front of us and impulses when you talk. And so it, it does kind of sound a bit like God.
Okay, okay. All right, Brian, Mr. Vaughn, go ahead.
Yeah, so we've listened to everyone. I guess if, if, if I could maybe just poll the board if there was any further thoughts or comments.
Yeah, good idea.
We clearly know what, what Alan and, and Paul are, are looking at and where Alan stands. But I think we would like to request a continuance, reconsider if we can modify it in, in some way and to address those, those issues. But if we are continuing, I just would like to.
Absolutely, get all, get all the feedback.
And get a sense of any, any other comments.
Well, we, we're not necessarily polling for votes, you're just polling for feedback.
Feedback, exactly, right.
So.
So I would, I would offer my feedback that I agree that it is a very large structure. I would also love to see a few more feet. I understand the lot is, makes that really difficult and that the, the property is very far away and that the neighbor has agreed that this is okay. But I'd still be more comfortable with as much room as I could get beyond eleven feet.
So I have a question for you.
Either way.
So on here, on your application, it says ten eighty, but if you do twenty-four by thirty, that's seven twenty. So I'm just curious where that extra square footage came from.
Yeah.
Is that the second floor? It's like square footage of a garage. We had, we probably added the, come in four feet on the knee walls and we added the second floor to that number? I mean, how do you compute the square footage of a garage? Easy math problem, twenty-four by thirty does not equal ten eighty.
Right.
So, yeah, so it's the second floor storage. It, it's kind of like when you're building a house, do you add the real estate agent list, square footage in a garage or, you know, what do we? The square footage of the footprint, we can amend, say the first floor square footage? Is that what we're asking for?
We're, we're just trying to understand what the numbers actually mean. So like, for example, is the stor, if the storage above it is a whole second floor, then that would imply it's seven twenty times two, so it'd be fourteen forty. And so it's just sort of like, what is this number coming from?
So it's one and a half stories, one point five is thirty-two times twenty-four times one point five is probably ten eighty.
So you're counting, you're counting the storage on top half.
Correct. That's where the ten eighty number comes from.
Okay. Mystery solved, I got you now. I didn't get it before, but I totally get it now.
Maybe that would make the problem with the big garage worse by seeing the ten eighty number.
Correct.
My apologies.
Because I did the math and I'm like seven twenty and then I saw the ten eighty, I'm like, well, he's the builder.
You're a hundred percent right. Math problem does not add up, but.
So you're okay with seven twenty?
I am not, no.
So if you continuously need a vote or would you?
Well, unless there are any other comments.
Right.
Just making sure.
Okay.
Frank, Frank, you were cut off earlier. Do you have anything?
By me, I'm sorry.
I'm not too concerned about it. Either way, if there's a way to satisfy them, I think that'd be nice, but it doesn't hold me up.
So are you looking for September? So are you looking for September?
Next available meeting.
Would that be September?
September fourteenth.
All right.
I'll make a, if there's, unless there's anything else from the board, I'll make a motion to continue to September fourteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, continuing to the September fourteenth?
Aye.
Any votes? We're continued.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jen, can I keep this? Okay.
Just want to give all the issues.
Sorry, Brian, I didn't mean to step on your.
Cautionary tale.
All right, next up, we have.
A garage?
What?
You don't even garage sale, I'm a garage.
Yeah, garage. Next up, new public hearing on forty-five Russet Lane, Mr. Kuscha, we read the verbiage.
Notice to see by given that the north end of the border of appeals will hold a public hearing at the north end of the town hall and one twenty Main Street, north end of the map, Tuesday, August tenth, twenty twenty-one. At seven thirty P M, to all parties interested in the petition of Douglas Legere for property at forty-five Russet Lane, map one oh four point eight, parcel forty-eight, north end of the mass in the R one zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance pursuant to the town and north end of the zoning bylaws. Section one ninety-five, seven point three, table two. Summary of dimensional, dimensional requirements for one side setback in the R one zoning district for the purpose of construction, of constructing a twenty by twenty-four. A little different from the other guy, huh? Detached garage additionally specifically. Applicant has requested a side setback needing a relief of fifteen feet. The side setback proposed is fifteen feet and the side setback required per table two is thirty feet. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at one twenty Main Street, north end of the mass on Monday, Wednesday and Thursday from the hours of eight A M to four P M. Tuesday, from the hours of eight A M to five thirty P M. And Friday, from the hours of eight thirty A M to eleven thirty A M. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Cog Jr., Esquire Chairman.
I'm going to listen to it over and over again when I retire.
You can get it on the internet, by the way.
I'm, I'm going to get a little snippet of it, put it on a loop.
So who is here representing forty-five Russet?
Doug Legere.
There you, and your address is forty-five Russet?
No, I'm the building contractor.
All right, go for it.
And this is Maria Numchar, she's from Ohio.
All right, you want to tell us what you want to do?
So as you said, we're looking to add a twenty by twenty-four detached garage on the same side of the existing driveway. And the left side setback does not comply with the R one zoning setback. The proposed setback is fifteen feet, a variance is requested. Uh, you have the, the plans attached to the paperwork. So you can see where it's going on the plot plan as well as the elevation of the garage. I think it's on the last page.
Yes, it's on the same packet as the application.
It's possible Jen just doesn't like you.
That could be, that she would be a big company. Okay, thank you.
And the size of the structure is twenty by twenty-four.
Any else?
I don't know.
So, so my.
Questions for the board, go ahead.
So my first question that comes off is, is why on this side and not the other side?
Because that's where we have the driveway. And the other side has a swimming pool and, you know, land. And also our plot in the back goes like this. It's, it's a slop.
So if you look at the deck side, there's a fifteen by thirty pool off the deck.
Which is.
So the thirty foot, the thirty foot direction is the long way, um, similar to the home structure.
Yeah.
And to the whole right side, that's all woods in that area to the right of the pool.
But there is no existing garage, right?
So they have an existing garage under?
Yeah, it's, well, it's an old, uh, you know, split range.
So one under or two under?
Two, but it's really low ceiling.
Yeah, that's what I got.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I feel you.
And, you know, no basement, once again, for storage. And the lawn equipment is under a tarp in the back of our house. The usual story.
So for me, I don't know what makes this lot so special that you can't bring it forward if you have a slope in the back. Why can't you bring it forward? Why can't you bring it over? I don't understand, I mean, it looks like it was just placed. It doesn't, I mean, for me, and, excuse me, I'm, I'm not doing this to himself. It looks like, well, this is where it's going to be. It doesn't look like there was any effort into saying, let's put it here, let's design here. I have wetland restrictions, I have this kind of restrictions, this is like, this is where I want it. So you're asking for a variance. I'd like more reason why you would like a variance, not just this is because.
Yeah, okay, so the driveway goes down, so it'd basically be extending the driveway.
Because I'm not seeing a driveway on here?
So the driveway is on that side of the house. So if you look where it says, you know, one story, the driveway, looking at the house is on the left side. So it'd basically be a continuation of the driveway about eight feet into the, to the new garage.
So the, the current garage is on the side.
The left side, yeah, on the same side of the proposed garage.
So can the garage, okay, so is it, can it be moved, as I look at this, can it be moved to the right? What is, what is in this area here?
There is a.
I have a picture.
There is an old septic somewhere in the backyard area, I think.
So that's a picture of the backyard area.
Yeah, and so essentially, this is where your.
So there's a septic tank that you would be putting it on top of for a month?
Yeah, I think so, we don't know where it is, but I think it's actually sort of in that, behind the house area.
So the house on septic, no sewer?
Well, right now, we have, uh, we have public sewer, but there was a septic.
But you are not connected to it?
No, but we don't know where it is either.
So you're using it, you're saying?
No.
No, no.
It's, it's just a tank that is there.
Probably.
She believes the tank is to, directly behind the house. She believes the tank is in that location.
Okay, has that been, I mean, I'm just, if, if, if it could be moved to the right, then the variance would not, would not, would be less than fifteen feet?
Um, correct.
I mean, so.
So right now, we're proposing fifteen feet?
I'm sorry?
Right now, we're proposing the fifteen feet, if that needed to be adjusted.
Yeah, and I'm, my questions are just that it would, if you're not using the septic, I mean, it would seem to me that the location of that would be a, something that one would want to understand to, to determine if your garage could be repositioned.
Yeah.
Well, right now, it's kind of like, you know, we have the driveway and it's straight. Uh, if we have to move it, it's going to be a.
It might look funny skewed on the back of the house, I believe. In the back, you'd basically have the garage more in the backyard instead of at the end of the driveway.
Yeah.
It seems like there's a whole bunch of property there.
I know, but it, there is a slope, like it's a sliding slope, we took a look.
But we don't know that because we don't have a topo plan. We just have, I mean, we don't know where your driveway is, we just, again, you have a box.
Okay.
Yeah.
A box on here, this is what we're looking at, this is what we're seeing.
You want to, you, do you want to see this, the grading of the land?
That's not, doesn't, that's not a big slope, but I mean.
Well, the.
Visually, if I had, you know, if I see, if it went from ten to, you know, if it went from fifty to ten, yeah. If it went from ten to five, you know, it's, it looks like a gradual slope.
Okay.
And it's a twenty-four by thirty as well, and this is a story and a half.
No, no, twenty by twenty. Twenty by twenty-four.
That's the wrong one, oh, sorry, that's, that's coming up. That's the next one.
So there's a, a foundation plan, would be the first plan?
And the reason why it's twenty, the house is twenty, twenty feet and the garage is.
I believe the house is twenty-four by forty-two. And this, the garage they're proposing is twenty by twenty-four.
The height, no, the height of the house says here that it's twenty feet. And the height of the garage is twenty feet as well? Twenty-six?
So the height of the house is higher based on the width. The width of the house is twenty-four, the width of the garage is twenty. So it would be seven times four, there'd be a twenty-eight, twenty-eight inches lower roof line on the garage. So the, the home would be higher. Okay?
That's what I see.
Okay, let me see.
Existing building says height twenty dash six, proposed building height twenty dash two.
Yes, so the existing height is twenty foot six tall, the proposed addition is only twenty foot two tall.
So they're very similar in height?
The garage is shorter, yeah.
By four inches.
Right.
So a twen-, is twenty feet, is that two, a story and a half, or is that what the pitch? Or is that just?
That's with the roof line included.
Because the other one was a story and a half and it was also.
So there's going to be no storage above, it's an open frame structure with a garage door and a side garage.
I, I just need to know why it's going to be so high. So no storage?
Yeah, just for the vehicles and storage.
So for me, my opinion is I think a little more work could be done on this instead of saying, okay, this is where it is because this is where my driveway is. So a variance, to give a variance for me, you, you have to meet the certain criteria, soil, shaped topography. And, and that's general, you know, mass law. So I'm not satisfied on, on that, on those have been met in, in my eyes. So, I mean, I voiced my concerns that I think a little more work could be done, a little more effort into, you know what, we tried it here, it didn't work. We tried it here, or we might have a septic, not quite sure. You know, my slope looks like this. So I need a little more definite information on my end to make a calculated decision. I don't know, when, you know, what else, who else on the board has another opinion, so.
Other comments?
Well.
God will pipe in for a minute.
Go ahead, God.
I, I suppose I have a benefit of being able to look on, on Google at a bird's eye view. And, and I have to say, I, it's difficult to see the slope that they're talking about, but I really don't see an issue on why it can't be moved more to the right and even possibly turned. I understand that basically puts it in your backyard, but it does give you more, if not all of the setbacks that you need. Um, and it also allows for the driveway to be a continuation. And basically, you're putting a, a third garage right next to the two garages you already have. Um, I have to agree with Alan that I think more work, maybe looking at that, what I just mentioned, would be beneficial because you obviously are missing a lot of the aspects on, on asking for what you're asking for. And I'd also, I'll run with Alan on this as well and say, the height of this is, is really high if you're not, if it's going to be open. I don't see the purpose of that either. God out.
Other questions from the board?
I don't think I have other questions, but rather than let Alan and Alexandria, you know, ca-, carry the load, um, you know, I, from, from the first time I looked at, you know, just, just this plan, it felt like there was some disproportionately, you know, disproportionate height on, on the garage. I, I gotta believe that's easily addressed. Uh, as far as the, uh, you know, qualifying for a variance, uh, you know, Alan articulated that there's soil shaped topography. And I'm, I'm not sure that we've heard, um, you know, in which way this application is, you know, addressing, you know, that, that variance requirement. You know, what element of, actually, that's not fair. I've heard that there's a, there may be a topography issue, it just hasn't been fleshed out completely. So it's entirely possible, um, that it's, it's not necessarily soil, it's not necessarily shape, but the topography could absolutely, you know, we could walk through that door with a, with a, with some more drawings. So that, that's probably, and, and I don't, you know, I don't even know where I get after that. You know, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, you know, if we find topography and we reduce the height, I mean, those go a long way for me. Um, it's, it's still not necessarily slam dunk because I feel like there's an awful lot more to the plan. You know, once we see where the, where the driveway is, where it will be, uh, you know, how much more impervious service are we going to be creating? You know, th- those kind of details will arise once we have something a little bit more concrete than, than the, the back of the envelope here. So I guess I'll, I'll shut up, that, that's where I'm, where I'm thinking.
One other thought that I have is, is that, um, something that this proposal shares with the, the last one we just discussed is that it overwhelmingly affects one particular neighbor. Uh, and so, uh, it would be really helpful to know what that neighbor thinks of this project. And so if, if they have input, that would be, at least for me, very helpful in understanding the impact of this.
I don't think you show where the neighbor's house is either on here, how far they are away. I don't think, just to add to, you know, your comment.
Other comments, questions from the board?
Well, I, I think that, um, you know, with this, the height that it is, it's a like plain design. It's going to look a little awkward, I think, without.
If you hang kayaks in canoes, it works really well for that.
Yeah, but I mean, windows, this is, this is a big blank wall right here that people will be looking at in the street.
I'll put art there.
Well, then we.
Yeah, I, I mean, you.
Should identify it or something like, you know, we don't know that, it just looks like a.
Sounds good.
Anything else? So there is a sense, at least I'm getting, that you may want to go back and try this again, rework it a bit? Would you like to do that?
I believe so.
Okay. So would you like to request a continuance?
Yes.
Okay. For?
We might have to get a, a plan done with the topography to see the grading.
Okay, let's talk about that, eight weeks, yeah, well.
Eight weeks?
Eight weeks, so October? And what, Jen, when, when is the October meeting?
October fifth.
So that's in early October, is, do you think that'll be okay?
I believe so, yeah. Would it be okay if, if we ended up changing the location of the garage? If there was a retaining wall to retain the grading for the driveway as the slope goes down? Would that be okay?
That's, that, I don't, I don't think that's nothing that I sit here and objection to.
Okay.
I think in, in seeing the plans, that, that helps an awful lot.
Sure.
But it's nothing that I say, speak, again, speaking only for myself, a retain, a retaining wall doesn't negatively impact me as a concept.
So is there a motion for? Yeah.
We have an abut.
We have an abut.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is an abut, who is the abut?
So if you guys could, would you retreat to the gallery?
Sure.
And we'll have, anybody who wants to speak, come on up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jen.
You forget to do that, huh? It's like it's been so long, you, there's anyone here or against, huh?
Thank you, all right.
Would you say, name and address for this?
Certainly, Timothy Lane, twenty-one Russet Lane.
Amy Burgeon, twenty-one Russet Lane.
Ah, the neighbors that I was hoping to hear from. I can cross that off my list.
Are you using a left foot glum?
Yes.
Yes.
And first, I must say, Paul, I, I think your comment earlier, it's, it's tough to get up here and, and have concerns. They're lovely neighbors. This is a very awkward position to be in. Uh, but we do have some concerns about the plan. Some of it's around the elevation, in fact, and the height of the garage. Our property does sit low, the grading that they talked about goes down into their backyard and also goes down into our yard. So we're about, our backyard is about 20 feet, probably lower than where the position of this garage is gonna be. So you add another 20 feet of height onto that, it's, it's gonna be pretty large from our perspective. If you have an aerial or, or at least God has Google, Google Maps, you can see that our house is, is, is on that, is on that back corner.
You can pull up the assessor's map, that has at least the picture.
Yeah, so...
I mean, it's not the greatest.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody, have you...
The assessor's map is the only one that has the actual picture.
So, so our, our house is on the, where the yellow is on the back corner as well. So we're, we'd be about 35 feet away, our structure, from the border, so another 15 feet, we'd only be about 45 feet away from this, this proposed.
Would you mind that to Frank and then we'll just, we'll just pass it around?
Yeah.
Um, the petition does state that there are, there, there is some vegetation, which does create a partial shield in the summer. It goes away a little bit, or substantially, in, in the winter. There's a lot of vines that just grow out of control everywhere that, that gives us a lot of privacy, but, but in the winter months, fall, winter, and early spring, that's not there, so... We do feel like it being that close to our property, it, it will look really large from our backyard. And, and we, we feel like it might even take away from the value of our property if it's there, so...
It would kinda feel like it's on top of your pool.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
On top of the backyard, yes.
Any questions?
So, to, you heard some of the discussions that we had earlier. If this was set back a little bit further behind the house, would that, would that ameliorate some of your concerns or...
It would be further away. If it were lower, the height probably wouldn't be as obtrusive. You know, as it gets to the backyard though, we, we lose that screen entirely. So the screen is, is kinda where it's proposed, the, the temporary screen, the trees, but as it, as it moves back to the yard, it'll...
Well, I don't think we...
But it'd be in a lower position for sure.
I don't think it was moving fur- like, further back into the backyard, but more like towards behind the house.
Yeah.
I, we'll see what the plans look like in the future.
Yeah, it'd be worth it, yeah, sure.
So what would be your preference if it wasn't as high or it was further from the property line?
Both.
Okay.
I would, I'm interested in the, in the comment about potentially rotating it. So that it's about more behind the house?
Yeah.
That, that's something that would be interesting to see, this, the, the lots do slope, so it would be something that they're gonna have to look at with a topo and, and work out. But there would be a potential that it could potentially go expand behind the house. Although, I don't know if that means setback or not. Is that, yeah, that would be 30 feet at that point.
And they, they also just, I, I think that this elevation is in, would be on your side of the house, just this big blank wall. Is there, is that, is that, is it...
It's concerning.
Well, on one hand, I don't know, you know, you lose your screening, maybe that is screening.
Yeah, it's...
Or, or...
Yeah, it's...
It's a big blank wall.
It is what it is, I think at that point, you know, it's...
Could it be done differently that might be more appealing or in any way?
I think that has to do with the total height.
Maybe a big mural of a, of a tropical island or something?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm an artist, so, thank you.
Any questions?
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
So the question at the table was, is there a motion for a continuance to the October meeting?
Did, um, did they wanna rebuttal on, on that or did you, did they have any comment on that or did you wanna...
Why don't you come forward?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to. I'm just trying to guide you into your new role.
I appreciate it.
I mean, essentially, the nice thing, which, you know, could be for someone, to have that building between the two of us is that we can hear every word in the backyard. There is the sound, it's just like, you know, the sound carries in our case and none of the trees are helping with that. But, you know, that's sort of the only thing I could say in defense of having a structure between the two buildings because of how they situated. There is this like really nice sound pipe coming off that, their pool area.
And, and some, some can be mitigated by arborvitae's too.
Yeah, well, we have, you know, there are some actually, you know, fir trees or something in, in, in this parts before other things. They have to be pretty high to cover all of it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, Ron, I didn't mean to step on...
Here I ask this again.
I didn't mean to touch, stop on you.
No, 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 sorry, I appreciate the guidance, thank you. I will talk one more time. Is there a motion to continue to October 5th?
I'll offer a motion to continue this to October 5th.
Bless your heart, is there a second? Thank you. And all in favor of continuing?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are continuing to October 5th, thank you very much.
I know. Yep.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. All right, which brings us to item 3, which is new public hearing of 325 Johnson Street. Mr. Kuschea.
Notice to say by given that the North End of the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North End of a Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North End of a Mass, on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Allison Sparks and Kevin Sparks, the property at 325 Johnson Street, map 97, parcel 72, North End of a Mass, in the R3 zoning district. The applicants are requesting a variance pursuant to town and North End of a zoning bylaws, section 195 dash 4, 4.19 C, 2C, non-disturbance buffer zone within the watershed protection district in the R3 zoning district, for the purpose of constructing a new garage located in the non-disturbed zone within the watershed protection district specifically. Applicants have requested they be allowed to construct a one and a half story wood framed detached garage with a 24 by 30 footprint. Application and supporting material are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North End of a Mass, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from the hours of 8 AM to 4 PM. Tuesday, from the hours of 8 AM to 5:30 PM. And Friday, from the hours of 8 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, D. Paul Cock Jr., Esquire Chairman.
We chime. Your head is getting bigger. Positive, okay. Who is here?
I'm, my name is Jack Sullivan, I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group, I'm the engineer on this project. And I'm here on behalf of the owners, Kevin and Allison Sparks. They've lived at this property for over 30 years. And I just wanna give the board some background on this. As talked about, we're, we're looking to construct a detached accessory garage, 24 by 30, a story and a half. I submitted to the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. I had to submit to the Conservation Commission since we're within 100 feet of a wetland. I had to submit to the Planning Board because we're in need of a watershed special permit. I made that application then, because I felt under the zoning bylaw under the non-disturbance buffer zone, that this fell under section G, not C, saying that this is, this is construction of an accessory structure or expansion of an existing structure by less than 50% of the gross floor area if the existing primary structure is less than 2,500 square feet and the primary structure will be connected to SOAR. So I thought this was a by right application, so I made the submittal, knowing I had to go before two boards. And then when I met with Gene Enright, the planner, and then in talking with Paul, Gene felt there had been a practice that, that the term accessory is a little bit gray in the bylaw. I, I felt an accessory structure is pretty defined. This, this makes the case, it's accessory, it's not attached to the house, it's detached. I didn't fight it, I, I've worked in this town a long time. I said, Gene, if you think it requires a variance, I'll, I'll, I'll ask. Paul supported the request that it was a variance. I put in for the denial, Paul issued the denial, and so we're here tonight. So that, that's the process, so that's why I've already been in front of the Conservation Commission once, I've been in front of the Planning Board once. Both were continued until I could have the meeting with this board. The Planning Board sent this out for peer review. I just, Gene sent over the draft decision to me tonight. Basically for this garage, I'm putting in a, a dry well to capture all the roof runoff. And if you can see on the plan, the way I situated this garage, I tried to keep it close to the existing gravel driveway. We tried to only take down the minimum amount of trees necessary and only disturb as small an area as we can to get the garage in. So in accordance with the watershed requirements, you know, you try to preserve existing conditions as much as you can, that's what we've done. You can see where we sighted this garage. We meet all zoning setbacks, height, we're 70, almost 77 feet off the, the front setback. And it's situated basically in the center of the lot. When you look at the site plan, the majority of this site, even though it's a large site, it's over 85,000 square feet. 85% of this lot is within the 100-foot non-disturbed zone. If I was to try to locate this garage outside the non-disturbed zone and where the driveway presently is constructed, I would've had to take more trees, extend the driveway further to the garage, there'd be more impact. Also, this house is presently on septic and we're gonna, as part of the watershed application, we're gonna pump the cesspool, get rid of it, and, and put it, put it on town SOAR. They're also gonna connect to gas. But I think we've done a good plan, obviously, the hardship here is the wetland itself and the fact that the majority is, this site is within the 100 feet. And as I stated in my opening, I, I did agree to apply for a variance, I'm not sure how other board members look at an accessory structure if this has come up in the past, but Gene did say there were some pools that turned out to be within the watershed that were within the 100 feet and they've come before your board in the past. So that's really why I'm here. The height of this garage is, is gonna be 19 feet. It, it's fitting and the, they, they don't have a, a garage on the existing house, they've been there 30 years, they've always wanted a garage. They wanted to get one 20 years ago, 10 years ago. Now, now, they've never applied for one, but they, they, at this point, they said, we, we'd really like to get the garage. And there was a lot of thought in how we place this on the lot, we just didn't nilly willy, we placed it to limit disturbance on the property. I, I'm in front of Conservation tomorrow night, we're gonna close out. And as I said, at the next Planning Board meeting, we're gonna close out, assuming we get the approval on the variance here tonight. So I'll turn it back to the board for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board?
So we just had a long, long discussion, two sets of discussions about garage size.
I heard.
And so this is, this is a 30-foot wide, two-car garage, so that's, that's pretty wide. Is there a, a specific reason why it was sized that way?
Yep, yep, there was. So it's 24 feet deep, which is typical of, of, of a garage depth. The 30-foot width, they wanted a little bit of room, that allows the two, two, two cars to go in. And it would allow some room on the side for snow blower or, or equipment they might need without re... Like, at home now, I have a 26 by 24, I pull in with my SUV, my wife pulls in with her SUV, we can't even fit any, you know, I, I had to put a shed in just to get my snow blower in.
Yep.
So they, they were thinking ahead. I think those past two applications, they were looking for setback variances, you know.
Sure, sure.
Pretty 50% setback variances. If you look at, thi- this one's totally different, we're 71 feet off the side lot line, 77 off the front, 77 off another side. So the height and size of this, and you, you can see I show all the existing trees and the limited work. We have a heavily wooded buffer here. You're not gonna, you're not gonna notice it.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted to understand.
But, but that, I, just to bet, you know, that's, that's the difference between the last two. But there was thought that went into this and they said if they're gonna do this, they wanna allow room so they have, you know, they can fit a wheelbarrow, barrel of snow blow or something like that.
Well, I will attest to the fact that I went by it and couldn't see the house. I couldn't see anything. My GPS said I was there. That's the only way I knew.
Yeah.
All right? So this could be the Taj Mahal, I wouldn't see it.
You wouldn't see it.
Yeah.
So you need no variance per se from the Zone Boarding Appeals? It's strictly a wetlands issue?
Well, based, based on the definition, they're saying since this is under, under, within the non-disturbed bu- buffer zone, which I am, there was a decision made by the town that this is a construction of a new permanent structure and that can only be granted after a variance has been granted by the ZBA. I looked at this, as I stated in the beginning, as this is an accessory structure and I, I, based on the size of the house and the expansion, I didn't believe I had to come to the ZBA. But after talking with Gene and Paul, I didn't fight it, I said, okay, if, if you think I need a variance, I'm pretty confident I'll get the variance, I'll, I'll go through the process. But I wanted to explain why I went to those other two boards first. Typically I'd come to this board first and then go to the other boards, so I was a little backwards. So, yeah, there's no dimensional setbacks, no height, we, we meet all, all zoning requirements, it just happens we're within 100, we're within the non-disturbed zone.
My feeling is, if Conservation's happy with it, so am I.
That's mostly where I land too. I mean, surprise of all surprises, you and I are aligned, right?
You and I are on the same page, whoa!
Yeah, this is great.
Do you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw us, I agree with you too.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Ronnie, now we're gonna get God online to agree with us.
Let me withhold it. Alex, Alex, where are you on this?
I'm explaining that Conservation is waiting to see what we do.
And I'm happy to see that all of my disciples are agreeing for once.
Sorry, Steve, sorry, Steve. I just, I mean, it seems like the way that it works is, those other people are waiting to see what our position is before they, that they don't, they have not made one yet. That just, that's what my instincts just tell me from what I've observed here, so. When we say, they're looking for, what is our response gonna be to this, that's...
All it is is actually they're looking for paperwork, they're looking for the, the box to be checked. They don't really, they're not hanging on our decision, they're like, you need to do this portion of it before we can continue to do that portion. So it's, it just, procedure wise.
But, like Ron, I wanted to see it and I didn't. You can't see it either, and I didn't wanna get a no-trash pass.
I happened to drive by the, into the driveway and I thought for sure someone's gonna come by out with a shotgun. It's not firing. All right, honest to God, I really thought that someone's gonna come by with a shotgun, but they weren't home, obviously.
Yeah, I think they're on vacation, I haven't heard from them, but...
But I did drive all the way in.
So I shouldn't say that.
Yeah. They're coming back tonight.
They're home tonight.
Yeah.
But they just, it, and to back up what Steve said, the other boards, we didn't wanna close with them and they didn't wanna issue any approvals and then force this board's hand like, well, Conservation and Planning approved this and then now you guys, not that if that would change, you, you're an independent board, but the, the idea was, I, we asked for the continuance because this board's decision's critical. And they didn't, if, if you didn't grant the variance and I had the other approvals, it, it makes no sense.
How far into the buffer zone is it?
100%.
It's just short of 50 feet, it's just a little more than 50 feet away.
That's right, I, so Conservation requires you be at least 50 feet away from the, from the wetlands. I'm, I'm about 53 feet away, to, to the, to the closest part of the garage. But I'm in, I'm inside the 100-foot buffer by about 20 feet. But if I kept moving it, if I tried to keep moving it further back, I'd just take down more trees, it'd be more grading, more driveway, more disturbance.
Yeah.
And that's on what they want to see.
So those boards will put all, all the conditions that they feel are necessary to protect it.
They'll put all the conditions on it, right. And, and as I said, the Planning Board had a, a third party review this as well and provide comments that I addressed.
Seems to me like it's getting plenty of, plenty of coverage.
Yeah.
All right, so I would just box it up a, a little bit differently from, from Alan, which is not necessarily that if Conservation's okay with it, I am, which although it's true, but... But if Conservation's not okay with it, they're going to, you know, they're going to sink it or condition or whatever. So there's really not, there's not a huge risk. And, well, I'm mostly just a layperson. You know, you and Gene certainly parse the, you know, the sections of the code, you know, God bless you guys for doing it. I don't know the difference. I know that the applicant, like you said, the application is before us, so we need to hear it. And I'll certainly back, back Gene up that this, this needs to be here. With, with all that said, I always feel miscast on this one. This, it feels like the zoning board doesn't have an awful lot, you know, to add, I think, to the process or the procedure. And so knowing that the folks who know more about wetlands are coming up behind us gives me, you know, an awful lot of comfort that the wetlands are going to be tended to appropriately. So with, with all that said, I'm generally in, not an obstruction to applications like this. And I hear you loud and clear on the, on the size of it. I'm glad that the questions were asked. I'm glad that you, you answered, you know, and gave details for the plans for the structure. And the obvious distinction between this one and the others that we've heard tonight is that there is not an existing garage. So this isn't an addition. This is a wholly new use and incentive utility for the applicants. And there not being any dimensional requests whatsoever, you know, then we don't have to worry about what hives I get at single digits.
I make a motion to close the public comment.
There's nobody here.
Is there? Is there a second?
No.
For Malley? You got a second? I'll second it.
Well, you, you can.
Thank you, Frank.
You can't do that. You cannot do that.
I'm waiting for somebody else. Thank you.
You got a vote on it?
Gentleman in the corner.
All in favor of closing public comment?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Public comment is closed. Board deliberation?
I'll just say what Alan would say. It feels like a slam dunk to me. And I just, I just rest.
Now I have a problem.
Oh, man. Tempted fate.
However, we'll continue. I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to grant a variance pursuant to town and North End of a zoning bylaws, section 195 dash 4.19 C2C, non-disturbance buffer zone within the watershed protection district, the R3 zoning district, for the purpose of constructing a new garage located in the non-disturbed zone within the watershed protection district specifically. Applicant has requested they be allowed to construct a one-and-a-half-story wood-framed detached garage with a 24-by-30 footprint.
I second. All right. I don't think I'll second.
Yeah, absolutely are.
More than Ronnie. It's true.
Do we need a roll call or?
Yeah.
All right.
For this, for this review.
Yeah, so let's, let's do the roll. Alexandra, you want to vote?
Aye.
All right, fine. Alan?
Yes.
Paul? What?
Voting by Alan. Yeah, I'm, I'm an aye.
I was just going down the table.
I got you.
Does it matter?
No.
Okay.
No.
Your vote is?
Aye, baby aye.
Thank you. Alan?
Yes.
And my vote is yes as well? So it passes 5-0.
Flying colors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have an agreement on what?
Thank you, Jen.
Ah, okay, okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Just one, one quick announcement.
Yes, sir.
Which is that at the behest of some comments that were made at the last meeting, I did speak with the town, and we will be having, someone from the Royal Crest Project is going to come and give an introduction. It's not going to be a full-on public hearing. We're not going to do public comments and all that kind of stuff. But somebody from the Royal Crest Development is going to come in September and just give a presentation to us.
We'll be able to ask questions, right?
Yes, yes.
Is there any, is that just for informational purposes?
That's.
Or do we anticipate that we will, that we will be involved with various?
So I think that nobody, nobody really knows because the project has a shape and then it moves and then, you know, gets compacted or expanded or whatever. So it's not clear what the project is yet. I mean, there are ideas for what it's sought to be. But until somebody just determines, and that's going to be after this listening tour that the developer is on, until somebody determines where the project actually is going to be, they're not going to file any applications, so we're not going to know whether or not the zoning board is going to need to be involved. I would have an expectation that the applicant and the town are going to work together, perhaps put something on town, on a warrant town meeting in order to make some of the zoning easier for the project. And town meeting will certainly have a right to weigh in on it and ultimately have a vote on it. So if the zoning code is amended such that there is no relief needed from the board, then nothing's going to happen here at this table. If a 40B is attached to this in some way, shape, or form, and in no way am I suggesting that one is, I am not suggesting that there is a 40B coming down the pike. I have no information that one is. I have no information that one isn't. I'm just hypothesizing here. If a 40B. Pardon?
You think there'll be a 40B?[1633.51]